Can you hear the sound of heaven? Like the sound of many waters? It's the sound of worship coming from your throne. And there are cries of adoration, as men from every nation, to lift their voice to make his glory known. Singing, holy, holy, holy are you Lord. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord. The elders and angels bow, to redeem the worship here now. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord. Sing tonight, sing. Can you hear the sound of heaven? Like the sound of many waters? It's the sound of worship coming from your throne. There are cries, and there are cries of adoration, as men from every nation, to lift their voice to make his glory known. Shall lift our hands to say, oh, singing, holy, holy, holy are you Lord. Mighty God, sing, holy, holy, holy are you Lord. Oh, the elders and angels bow, redeem the worship here now. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord. Sing tonight, sing. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord, my God. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord. Oh, the elders and angels bow, redeem the worship here now. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord. Oh, we praise your name, Jesus. Hallelujah, oh, my God. Hey. Oh, the elders and angels bow, redeem the worship here now. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord. Shall lift up our hands to us and pray. And say, Lord, fill this atmosphere. The elders and angels bow. And holy, holy, holy are you Lord. For you deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we bless your holy name. For you deserve, oh, we tell it tonight, you deserve the honor. Lord, we lift our hands. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we bless your holy. You deserve the glory. You deserve the glory. Oh, we worship you. We give you the honor. Lord, we lift our hands as we bless your holy name. For you deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we bless your holy. Shall we say tonight? For you are great. You do miracles and grace. And there is no one else like you, Jesus. There is no one else like you. For you are great. You do miracles, oh, so great. There is no one else like you, Jesus. There is no... ...... Jesus. Glory to the Lamb. All the carat we are to so. Glory to you God. Oh, glory to the Lamb. Glory to the Lamb. Sing glory. Oh, we just worship you God. Oh, glory to the Lamb. Sing glory. Oh, mighty God, oh, we praise your name. And glory to the Lamb. For you are glorious and worthy to be praised. You're the Lamb upon the throne. Oh, and unto you we lift a voice of praise. You're the Lamb upon the throne. ... Oh, dear, my God, my God. To the carat, oh, dear. They were hard to cut. Boom, can't you be? To the girls, sell it to me. They were hard to cut. Dear, my God, my God. To the carat, dear. Oh, we want to find you. Oh, boom, I can't be? To the girls, sell it to me. They were hard to cut. Shall lift up our voices and sing. We cry out, we drop our voice. Say, Lord, in your presence, all things have made you. Oh, la basikhna ma ma niyora na 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 de. We lift your praise. Oh, the Lamb upon the throne. Oh, for you are glorious and worthy to be praised. You're the Lamb upon the throne. Oh, you alone. And unto you we lift a voice in praise. You're the Lamb upon the throne. To the carat, oh, dear. Boom, I can't be? Boom, I can't be? To the girls, sell it to me. Dear. They were hard to cut. Dear, my God, my God. To the carat, dear. Dear. They were hard to cut. Boom, I can't be? To the girls, sell it to me. Dear. They were hard to cut. ... To the carat, dear. To the carat, dear. To the carat, dear. To the carat, dear. ... Much time I want to give to the speaker so that he can, you know, take enough time and minister to us. Amen. God's gonna, you know, really deliver us something only when you expect. It's not so much about the speaker.
...
But what kind of mentality, what kind of attitude you're coming to the presence of God to receive what God is about to release in your life. You connect to the spirit of God depending upon your level of hunger and thirst. And if you keep saying to God, saying, Lord, the Holy Spirit, I want to have an encounter with you. I need to receive your word tonight. And I believe in a God who sees your heart will unveil the glory and the revelation of his word to you this evening. So, and now Pastor Joseph Naveen is not a new face in this church. I forgot, when did he come? 2020 or 19? 19. 2019 he was here.
...
And we had a blessed time.
...
Now Pastor Joseph Naveen and his wife Leno, they passed a church called the Awakening Ministries in Kolathu, Chennai. And it was a coincidence, I met him. No, I can't say coincidence. He came to see me. Intentionally, he came to see me and visited me in Bangalore, 2018, I guess, yeah. I found myself connected to him in the spirit.
...
From that time, you know, he is connected so much with us. You know, and their church is, you know, really growing in the city of Chennai. And God is using his servant powerfully. And he is very seasoned with the word of God. And always, I believe for a man of God, it's the word out of his mouth. And now that brings the distinction. Because they speak on behalf of God.
...
And the Bible says, "Men spoke from God as they were carried along by the Holy Spirit." Now people don't speak enough from men. They speak from God. Amen. The man of God. I'm talking about the man of God speaks from God. Amen.
Amen.
So, with that attitude, I wanted to receive the word. And it comes with a lot of experience. And now his dad and mom, know, they served as missionaries. So at a very young age, he started preaching. So he has gone around over thirty-five nations and now taking the word. So I want to invite Pastor Joseph Naveen to come forward, take this time and minister to us. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Come on louder, hallelujah.
...
How many of you know churches are noisy place? The church was birthed in sound.
...
If you, if you want silence, you can go to the graveyard. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
How many of you know, John the Baptist was called the voice? The voice prepared the way for the word.
...
So, turn to somebody and say, a closed mouth is a closed blessing. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. I'm so excited to be here this evening.
...
As much as you see me smiling outside.
...
Inside, I'm trembling.
...
Not because I stand before a crowd like this. I honor Pastor Samuel Jayraj and Pastor Pramila Jayraj. In 2019, I met them.
...
The moment I met them, I knew I had a family in them and they had a family in me. I know, I just started connecting with him so much. I've been in the ministry when I was from nineteen years.
...
I don't want to say my age now.
...
But I've been, you know, for donkey's years.
...
But it's not about how long.
...
It is what God is doing now.
...
It's not what you did.
...
It's what is God is doing now. So, 2019, I came here.
...
I never wanted to be a pastor.
...
He broke that.
...
He looked at me and said, Pastor, you're going to pioneer a church. I said, this is very important. I said, no, I don't want this.
...
No, he said, no, I see this happening in your life.
...
At that season, I know. Anyone who will see me, they'll say, you're going to pastor a church.
Enai, parka, ellar, sunnur, kariyam, ningal, sabay, aranikke, pogurirgal.
Whether that pastor is anointed or not.
Andha, bodagar, abishayang, panna, but, avra, illai, parava, illai.
It was like God would just corner you.
Idu, devan, ugul, lakkarar.
So eventually, I went back to Chennai, we started a church.
Kadishyage, Chennai, patthadle, poi, angi, oru, sabay, naangal, aramitho.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
It's not what you like it, what he wants. Amen. So, but you know something, after that, God changed my heart.
Ennoorid, irudeti, devan, martinar, thak.
I look forward for Sunday mornings.
Na, nightukalam, da, haravanee, edir, noke, pathukundarne.
I look forward to feed the church.
Sabay, booshipadhi, edir, noke, pathukundarne.
You know, I used to be a very short-tempered guy.
Na, ippidiaga, oru, oru, kobum, elidha, kobum, radain, oru, nabag, naber.
But God just changed my heart into a father's heart.
Anal, devan, udai, irudeti, maat, oru, thakapana, irudeti, maat, maat.
I would cry with people.
Na, janangalood, ippidi, inayindu, pogaviruvani.
I would laugh with people.
Janangalood, sirikka, aramithain.
And this is not me.
Adu, na, ala.
But God changed my heart.
Anal, devan, udai, irudeti, maat, vittaa.
I thank God for pastor.
Bodagar, nandis, sorudukray.
I thank God. Come on, give them a big clap here, come on.
Nandis, ellar, karangal, thatti, avla, aasirvadikala.
You know, and to be very frank, I know I SMS them, they SMS me.
Ipoldum, kuda, na, avul, kyu, SMS, say, and avul, badal, SMS, say, vargal.
But I don't take that closeness for granted.
Na, na, avoodu, kuda, andha, naringirukkara, kariyithi, oru, bodum, laguva, edutukalam, matain.
God knows.
Devan, kuthariyum.
I honor them.
Avale, na, kanampannuvay.
Revive them.
Avale, ippo, bhaipadun, avuk, kunduvaray.
I know what they carry.
Avale, pettukundurukrathu, sumandukundu, arivay.
And even this time I came, I just didn't come to give, I came to receive.
Na, indhatam, indhamore, vandhu, dum, avar, enndhu, pettukulumbadi, vandurukray.
And how many of you know, you are so blessed to have a father and mother like this.
Ippidipattu, oru, thaayin, thakapana, ugul, kada, thithi, nanithi, ethane, pera, aasirvadama, enni, virigal.
If you're clapping for somebody, you can do it, if you're clapping for them, you can do it much better.
Avare, kand, ningal, karantattu, vandhal, ningal, innu, madigam, aysukkal, antattalam.
I know my wife is burning with jealousy now.
Enak, thari, ennoorid, manavi, polu, poramay, battukundurukvargal.
She loves Pastor Premila.
Enndhal, bodagar, Premila, orgalay, nesikravarkal. Ippe, enna, kattal, kuruthu, avlo, love.
You know, that's how much we love this couple.
Apputtha, na, yul, irubarui, naangal, nesikro.
I really mean it, pastor.
Na, soluvadu, unmay, agavay.
Even if you wouldn't have invited me today, we love you, we honor you, we just, I do not know, you're so special to us.
Ningal, lakavittalum, ningal, vishesham, anavarkal.
Amen.
Amen.
Are you ready to hear the word of God today?
Devan, udai, vartay, pettukala, ayatham, marukringala.
So, let's go to the word. Come, come and just close your eyes and look up to God.
Karangalay, moodi, devan, udai, samudra, na, path.
Father, this is your church.
Pidaave, du, ummadiya, sabay.
This is your people.
Idu, ummadiya, janam.
This is your word.
Idu, ummadiya, vartay.
This is your spirit.
Idu, ummadiya, aavy.
Send your word.
Ummadi, vartay, anupoom.
Revive your people.
Ummadi, janangal, weerpayum.
Let them see the invisible so that they can do the impossible.
Andavare, idu, avar, pettukalatum, paridana, kariyam, sayimbadia.
Give us a teachable spirit.
Na, indhadatal, bodikro, aavy, kudukray.
I pray the word will fall in good ground.
Na, jebikray, vartay, anand, nal, nathat, lavelavendu.
Give them, give us a spirit of understanding.
Engal, purindukkala, aavy, tharuvira.
We know we serve a God of mysteries.
Devan, marai, porle, velipadutthu, oru, devan, aaradikro.
But you whisper into our spirit so that we can understand.
Anal, engudi, aavy, le, eni, pesuvira, apputtha, purindukollu.
Lord, to the world, it is a mystery, for us, it is a love language.
Andavare, ummadi, vartay, oru, marai, porla, irunthalam, anal, engal, kudu, oru, anbin, bashay.
Where the spirit of the Lord, there is liberty.
Aavyan, oru, enge, unda, avu, biddhalay, undu.
I pray the spirit of the Lord will take over this moment.
Na, jebikray, andha, neerathi, aavyan, edutukolvaraga.
Fill my mouth with your word.
Ummadiya, vas, vartain, udai, naavil, narapoom.
Consecrate our years.
Engudi, kaadugali, sutthikariyum.
Take over this congregation.
Indha, koottadu, umakant, edutukollum.
We will not take a blessing, but we will take the blesser.
Verum, aasirvadhi, maat, pettukala, amal, aasir, vadikkaravare, naangal, pettukalavendu.
We will not just take the gifts, but we will take the giver.
Naangal, verum, varangalay, pettukala, amal, varangalay, kodupavare, pettukala, vendu.
Do it, Lord.
Seyum, andavare.
Glory for your son.
Ummadiya, kumarani, naangal, magimay, padutukro.
Spirit of God, touch whoever you want to.
Pasudha, aavyanavare, yarallan, thodavennu, thodunge.
In Jesus' name.
Eesuvin, naamathinalay.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. I'm happy that today we are not going live, it's a private setup.
Na, santhoshima, irukray, enndhal, the malevela, live, naangal, pogavellai, idu, thanipattu, oru, kulugant, amakabattu, irukkathu.
I, I believe this is the true church.
Na, viswastik, idu, than, unmay, anas, sabay.
There, there's a Jewish proverb that says, the first mile is for, is for duty, the second mile is for love.
Ippidi, aso, mudal, mile, anadu, oru, kattay, may, seer, oru, kariyam, anan, 2, mile, kupodan, andha, anbin, adipadale, povu.
People who can come on a Sunday morning, it's natural.
Nightukalam, kaala, aaradikkaravare, avrav, idi, erkian, oru, koottam.
But to come on a Friday evening like this, it takes a price to pay.
Anal, vellikalamay, saangalam, ippidipattu, koottam, varugrathu, idirkandu, oru, kariyathi, salukavendu.
And I know today the Lord wants to reveal his mysteries.
Na, viswastik, nambugray, naandavare, raatri, velay, marai, porla, velipadutha, varumbavikala.
The Bible is of two parts.
Vedam, 2, pakkam, may, am, prikalaam.
The Bible is a book of history and the Bible is a book of mystery.
Adu, varalarin, oru, pakkam, mattuntu, marai, porla, velipaduthu, oru, pakkam.
The history gives me faith.
Anal, andha, varalaru, namalay, vandhu, rachikam, muddiyathu.
But the mystery takes me to hope.
Anal, andha, marai, porla, anadu, enna, nambikay, kina, edutukundu, salo.
That's what Paul says, he's the hope of glory, Christ in me.
Adarka, then, powl, solugrathu, Kristyanak, kudu, oru, magimay, nambikay.
There is a time where God will take you to a path where he will reveal himself.
Andav, tamay, velipaduthukkara, oru, kattathu, ugul, kundubovar, saramay.
And there's another season, he will take you to a path of unknown.
Anal, inno, oru, kaala, kattam, undu, angi, ariyada, oru, kariyathu, kina, vallin, neduthvar.
I asked a prophet of God like this.
Na, ippidi, deva, thirti, katharsin, paathuk, kekukray.
I asked him, how do you walk with God?
Eppidi, ningal, devan, ogud, natakurirgal.
He said, the best way to walk with God is to close your eyes.
Eppidi, devan, ogud, natak, sirandha, kariyam, enthal, kangeli, moodikolavendu.
Without my natural eyes being closed, the, the spiritual eyes cannot be open.
Ennoorid, erkian, kangel, moodapada, pachathile, idh, aavy, kure, kangel, tharakam, muddiyathu.
I think there was no other greater man of the New Testament than Paul, who had great revelation of God.
Powlay, polay, ippidi, marai, porugalay, velipad, velipadutha, patta, kariyali, pettukundu, powlay, poora, vera, manushan, illai.
And if you see, the journey started, God had to first blind him to able to see.
Anal, avadi, prayanathi, parkum, menthal, mudal, aadu, devan, avalay, kurudakinaar, pimbu, avadi, kangeli, tharande, parkumbadi, saytha.
See, God had to make Zachariah dumb so that the voice can be born.
Zachariah, vay, devan, kaadugali, attake, say, umayaki, pimbu, avar, tharandar.
So dumbness in the flesh makes the openness in the spirit.
Adu, yalabde, maamsatile, ippidi, umayay, naam, kaadu, attikapattu, undhalum, aavy, kure, nalam, ilay, adu, tharakapadukur, anubhavam.
So blindness in the flesh opens the spirit realm to your eyes.
Maamsigri, maamsigri, diya, kangel, kurudakapattu, undhalum, aavy, kure, nalay, adu, tharakapadukur, anubhavam.
So it's not about information, it's about the revelation.
Adu, thakavala, kuruthu, kariyam, ala, velipattin, oru, kariyam.
Are you ready to receive from the Lord?
Ethanabirku, devan, eddathu, pettukala, varumbukirigal.
The, the, the next two days, it is not about Joseph Naveen.
Idu, 2, naat, kel, Joseph, Naveen, kuruthu, dalala.
It's about your hunger.
Idu, uggudi, daagatay, vaithey.
It's about your radical thirst.
Ningal, ippidi, daagamai, pettukala, irukkiringla, alavaithey.
It's about your willing to receive what God gives.
Ningal, virupappadu, vanjay, padu, devan, vaitthurukka, kariyali, pettukulukkala, avadu.
The Bible says, the violent will take it by force.
Ippidiaga, vedam, solugrathu, ni, naam, munti, naam, pettukala, vendo.
See, there is a time when God will give you.
Silla, neerathu, devan, ugul, kudupar.
He will give you.
Avar, kudupar.
But there is a moment, he says, I'm not going to give you, I respect you and honor you, now you take.
Silla, netta, oru, soluvar, unai, kanampannukray, unai, mariyadak, kuduk, varumbukray, ni, pettukalavendu, minathul, irukkathu.
There is a time where God says, I'm going to give you.
Andha, neerathan, devan, solugrathu, unak, na, kudupen.
But when he builds a trust in you.
Anal, u, ningal, andha, nambikay, kipathavana, marumbodi.
See, I have my wife and my daughter at home.
Ennoorid, magalum, ennoorid, manaviyim, anga, vittal, irukkara.
I can give a knife to my wife, I can't give my knife to my son and my daughter.
Ennoorid, manaviyikki, katti, oru, kayla, kudukala, manudai, maganukko, magalukko, katti, kuttu, muddiyathu.
The problem is not with the knife.
Adu, katti, la, prachanay, ala.
I trust my wife with my knife.
Ennoorid, manavi, kayla, katti, avar, lena, nambugray.
But I can't trust that knife with my son, who is two years.
Anal, 2, vaidu, lendu, magaludai, kayla, katti, ena, namba, muddiyathu.
Revelation is powerful.
Bindha, velipad, anadu, vallamay, kuriyathu.
It can make you or it can break you.
Adu, ugul, oru, vaakum, illa, vettal, ugul, utaitabadu.
Revelation is not something emotionally tickling.
Idi, edo, velipad, enthu, unarchi, riya, pettukala, oru, kariyam, ala.
Revelation is nothing but the written word becomes the spoken word.
Edhappatta, vartay, anadu, peechiri, diya, kodukka, pettukulukkari, adu, ve, velipad.
This house is a house of revelation.
Indha, veedu, oru, velipad, veedu.
This house is a house of revelation.
Indha, veedu, oru, velipad, naran, veedu.
I know so many thousands of people take their manna every Sunday from this church all around the world.
Enak, thariyum, ulag, muluvadum, ayyaram, kana, kana, janangal, indha, vittal, irukkara, mannavay, pusikrargal.
I go to France, people talk about this church.
France, kana, deshathuk, pogum, thud, indha, sabay, kuruthu, peesukrargal.
I go to Switzerland, people talk about Pastor Premila's church, Pastor Premila's message.
Suzeran, dugu, pohum, thirti, kathasi, a, Premila, vadi, message, 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 peesukrargal.
Wherever I go, the Lord is made this church as a lighthouse to the nations.
Engel, allam, poromo, deshangelike, indha, sabay, oru, kalan, kara, vilakkam, aga, devan, maat, irukkara.
Because you are the children of this church.
Enndhal, ningal, indha, sabayin, pilligal, irukkuri.
Now God says, I honor you.
Andav, solugrathu, ugul, kanampadukray.
I've kept a buffet.
Ugul, kand, oru, virundhi, ayatham, veyvathukray.
I've kept a feast.
Ugul, kand, oru, mall, oru, virundhi, ayatham, veyvathukray.
Take whatever you want to.
Ugul, edhal, allam, pettukala, vendu, oru, pettukal, ingal.
Imagine, someone takes you to a buffet in Leela Palace.
Karpani, seethu, parunga, Leela Palace, ugul, virundhi, kala, thust, solugrargal.
Yes, so you're going there.
Ningal, poringa.
It starts from Kanji.
Adu, Kanji, la, aramithu.
It starts from desert.
Adu, desert, la, muddikrathu.
You have mutton biryani.
Ull, mutton biryani, undu, ne.
You have kebabs.
Kabab, undu.
You have any, you have water.
Anga, thanni, undu.
You have ice creams.
Anga, ice cream, undu.
You have pizza.
Anga, pizza, undu.
It's your choice.
Adu, uggudi, virupam.
You want to stay with Kanji, stay with Kanji.
Ningal, Kanji, odu, kuda, irukkavendu, menthal, anga, irukkalam.
But if you want to go for mutton biryani, go for the mutton biryani.
Mutton biryani, saapada, virupan, thand, mutton biryani, saapada.
God honors your decisions.
Devan, ugulidhi, andha, ni, ugulidhi, thirmanathi, muddi, vay, oru, kanampandukrar.
How many of you are ready to go for a meal?
Ethanabirku, ippidi, nal, virundhi, saapada, ayatham, marukray.
How many of you are ready to go for a kill?
Ethanabirku, ippidi, patta, oru, nal, virundhi, saapada, ayatham, marukray.
It's not in my hands in preaching.
Ennoorid, andha, bodag, ennoorid, prasangat, in, kayla, ala.
Your hunger determines how much I give.
Uggudi, daagum, pasin, na, endhal, avuk, ningal, pettukulukkana, thirmanikrathu.
Your desperation determines what comes from the altar.
Indha, balibadutha, oru, kariyali, pettukulukkathu, uggudi, thivaram, na, muddivusay.
I'm telling you, I came desperate to pull something from them.
Na, ugul, kudu, saladu, na, thivaramai, vandu, avudi, valkile, andhu, oru, pettukala, vandurukray.
All the things you see is not magical.
Ningal, parkrindha, kariyali, edo, oru, oru, magic, ana, kariyam, ala.
Every pillar here talks about a sacrifice.
O, oru, pillar, um, thiyagat, in, oru, adayala.
Every pillar carries a price they paid.
O, oru, indha, pillar, ningal, parka, thoongal, oru, kreyatin, balip.
Everything you see has come from a sacrifice, from tears and pain.
Ellam, oru, thiyagat, odu, kani, rodu, vidai, kappattu, in, oru, velipad, ningal, parka, oru, kariyam.
How many of you know, a tear of a man of God is so precious to God?
Ethanabirku, thari, devam, manushan, udai, kani, anadu, devan, udai, parve, le, velay, eera, pattu.
And you are sitting here on a place where the price is paid.
Indha, eddal, oru, rukhandurukrar, andha, eddal, oru, thiyagat, oru, kreyat, oru, selpi, irukkara.
You never, you will never know what they did.
Avar, enna, seedar, ogul, go, undu, oru, bodum, thariyathu.
They might not even tell you, and that's unnecessary for them to tell you.
Oru, vela, avar, ugul, soluvadu, oru, nal, oru, kariyam, am, ugul, thondalam.
But I want you to plow and take your harvest.
Anal, ningal, thondi, indha, indha, aruvadai, pettukala, vendo.
Are you ready, church? Are you ready, church? The Lord told me when I came here, I'm going to move in a physical way the next two days. We're going to see miracles happening. We're going to see miracles happening. We're going to see the prophetic happening. But the Lord is saying, I'm going to prepare the heart of the people. Are you ready to go to the next level? Come on, I can hear you shouting. Come on, I can hear you, church. Jubilee revival, I can't hear you. Hallelujah! I'm going to talk about the presence of God. The presence of God. You know something, the presence of God is so amazing. That without you encountering the presence of God, nothing can happen in your life. The presence of God or the glory of God is nothing but the face of God. You know something, worship opens the realm for the supernatural. I've seen one thing, if you want to move in the supernatural, if you have to move in the prophetic, worship and the presence is the foundation. David was not only a king, he was a prophet because he was a worshipper. Worshipper is not part of the five-fold ministry, it is the foundational ministry of every child of God. I would say a worshipper is greater than an apostle. A worshipper is greater than a prophet. The five-fold ministries are not opposed, it is a functionality. It is a functionality. But worship comes of sonship and daughtership. A servant can be an apostle, a servant can be a prophet, but only a son can worship and a daughter can worship. This mo- this evening God is saying, I want you, you have the delight of the Father in you. There's a God who sings over you. The Bible, the, 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 the original translation says, He whistles over you, He whistles. Another translation says, He's da- He dances over you. The Bible, I want to tell you, today the Father so, is so delighted over you this evening. So, if we go to the presence of God, we have to go to the Ark of the Covenant. The Ark of the Covenant is nothing but the, the manifested or physical symbol of the presence of God. I'm going to run through like a Shaddapthe Express because the Lord's to give you tonight. Grab it, receive it. So inside the Ark of the Covenant, there was a vessel which had manna. All of you know manna was a food from God, food from heaven given by God to the people of Israel. Swigis and zomata was invented here. Early morning, the food was outside the house. Thank God for the women those days, they celebrated this because no cooking was then. They didn't have to buy vegetables, they don't have to buy grocery, the food was hot, it was fresh, it was just outside the house. Shall I tell you a secret, God loves you in such a way that He does not want you to strive for your blessing, the blessing is just outside your house. I don't want my children to strive, I would do the striving and they were, I want them to relax. You know, sometimes we boast about the hard work and the sacrifices we do for God. But, but God is not interested in that. If you are a person of striving, which means you are still in religion. But let me tell you, the Pi- the God of the Bible is a God of relationship. He says, you don't do anything, I will do for you. How many of you have seen politicians moving in the streets? Just imagine a VIP comes. Front, there'll be ten police cars. After that, the chief minister or the MP will come. Because they are escorted, because they are a very important person. In all the religion, the God is the VIP and people carry their God. But in the Bible, we see God says, my presence will go before you, you are my VIP. Hey, God is saying, you are so important that you don't have to carry me, I will go before you and make every crooked part straight, I will prepare your destiny, I will take everything what has to be done. Come on, turn to something and say, you are a VIP. You are a VIP. You know, some people say, I am a saved sinner. You either saved or you are a sinner. You can't be a saved sinner, come on! See, these are words to have a hypocritical humility by us. Hallelujah! Some of us, we see God from a place of brokenness, but God says, no, you are my delight. I want you to leave this church tonight to saying, you are very important to God. The angels are there to serve you. The angels are there to serve you. Tonight, you will see angelic activities here. You will see breakthroughs coming here. You will say, who did it? How did that happen? There was a servant sent for you. There was a servant sent for you. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! The Ark of the Covenant had a vessel with manna. The problem with manna was, it can only be fresh for only twenty-four hours. You can't have it in the refrigerator. After twenty-four hours, it will stink, it will decay. But God tells Mo- God tells Moses, take the manna, keep it in a vessel and keep it in the Ark of the Covenant. And the moment the manna went into the Ark of the Covenant, it not decayed. It did not perish. It not fade away. It was fresh for again and again and again. Inside the, the presence of God breaks expiries in your life. The expiry thing, whatever thing you are saying is coming to an end, that will break in the presence of God. The doctor say, if you are fifty years, wait for this problem. Few years back, I went to an eye doctor. He's my friend's father. So I said, Uncle, can you just please check my eyes? Come sit. He checked my eyes. He said, hey, Naveen, everything is okay with you. The day you turn forty, come to me, then all your problems will start. Who told the doctors that forty years, all the problems will start? You know, if you take a bank loan, they will tell you, oh, this is your age, so which means in the next thirty years you will repay the loan, so they decide in thirty years you will die. Who gave them the audacity to tell you how long you will live? Are you with me, church? In the presence of God, there is no expiry. Your money will not expire. Your blessings will not expire. Your body will not expire. Nothing will expire in the presence of God. Let me tell you, the Bible says, you will renew your strength like an eagle. I declare health and healing over you. We declare every certificate and every medical report the doctors told you, we cancel it in the presence of God. The presence of God breaks expiry. People say, oh, my fa- my grandfather died when he was forty, my father died when he was, oh, let me tell you, the presence of God breaks generational curses. What your father carried, you will not carry. What your father could not achieve, you will achieve. Where that man fell, you will not fall. The presence of God cancels expiry. Hallelujah! The next thing, inside the Ark of the Covenant was a rod of Aaron. And that, that rod, when it kept into the Ark of the Covenant, it blossomed overnight. For that to happen, it takes many years. But overnight, the, the rod of Aaron blossomed. It brought the fruit. It brought the harvest. In the Ark of the Covenant, there is speed. There is speed, speed, vega. Now some people say, oh, for you to reach this level, it will take twenty years. Oh, for you to start a ministry and to build a mega church, it will take thirty years. Oh, you are entering the corporate, it will take twenty-five years to reach that level. But in the presence of God, what will take twenty-five years will happen in twenty-five minutes. What, what can take for fifty years will happen in fifty minutes. Let me tell you, the presence of God compresses time. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! The first miracle that Jesus did was over-time miracle, which means the, the, the wine was so tasty that it took the wine for many years to come, it happened in minutes. I declare speed over you right now. I'm telling you, some, some people, I'm telling you, the, how many of you know, God is not controlled by time. God does not have a watch in his hand. He does not have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Sunday, Saturday. He does not function by January, February, thir- uh, I mean, oh, December, September, nothing. He is outside time. He comes from a place called eternity. But let me tell you, he, he works in seasons. I declare your season is changing. Your season of striving is changing. Your season of shame is changing. Your season of, of hardship is changing. Hallelujah! Let me tell you, the presence of God is not, it's, it, it, it is not in the hands of the time, but time is in the hands of the presence. Are you with me? Are you receiving? Are you receiving? Are you receiving, church? The next thing, the, 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 the law of God was kept into the ark. The ark is nothing, sorry, the, the law was nothing but the covenant of God. The covenant means two people. The spirit of God is telling me, I'm not fighting, is all alone, the spirit of the Lord is standing with you. This mo- this evening, God wants to partner with you. The mountain you are facing, you don't have to move, you have God as your partner to move those mountains. We didn't make a covenant with him, but he made a covenant with you and me. We belong to the Abrahamic covenant. Oh, hallelujah! Hallelujah! You are not alone. You are not alone. You are not alone. You have the creator of the universe standing with you. He says, come on, let's do it together. Let's fight you together. Let's do this together. Hey, the Lord is saying, I am with you. You and God are a majority. This evening, God is saying, I am with you. I am with you, I am for you. Come on, God is not against you. You know something, you know why the devil hates us? You know why the devil hates us? He sinned once. He sinned once. He was thrown from the presence. You and I sin a million times and yet he puts us on our lap and says, come on, Shreya, I love you. No wonder he hates you and me. No wonder he goes to the presence of God accuses about you and me. But you know something, you cannot do anything to make God love you more. Come on, are you with me, church? He is with you, covenant God. He is a covenant God. You know, two days back, suddenly my son was very restless. So, so my wife said, just take him to the shop, go take him the bike and take him out. He's a cute naughty boy, not this very naughty naughty, but cute naughty. So I stood, I, I took hold of his hand, I was taking him. We stayed in the first floor. So I was holding him like this. So he was walking like that, he was so energetic. So every time he put a step, he will skid and fall. But he will never fall to the ground. Because I'm holding him like this. The spirit of God said, son, there is exactly what is happening to you. The steps of the good man are ordered by the Lord. Though he fall, though he fall, you will not fall to the ground. You will fall into the daddy's arms. It's okay to fall into his arms. Because you are not holding him, but he is holding you. He is not holding you, but he is holding you. Hallelujah! That's why he says, he's the author and the finisher of, of the faith. He took hold of you. Not because he cried. Not because he gave a big salary. Not because he prayed for forty days. He says, I decided to hold you. Until we go to the other side. This hand will not leave you. You can do the worst thing, but yet I will hold you. You can run away from me, but yet I will hold you. Hallelujah! Come on, give God a big clap offering. Amen. Because some of us are wanting to go to heaven. Not knowing is heaven is now. Heaven is now. There's an old Sunday school song is singing, oh, ho, ho, heaven is in my heart. So you don't have to die to go to heaven. We are seated in heavenly places with Christ Jesus. Come on, you are in the throne room right now. You are sitting with him. You are sitting with him. You are sitting with him. The father's values, you, you know what's your value? Your value is Jesus. Your value is not ten million. Your value is not hundred million. Your value is not Mercedes-Benz. Your value is not a bungalow in Bangalore. Yo, yo, your value is not your degree. Your value is not which family you come from. Your fam- your value is Jesus himself. Which means you are not sitting below Jesus, you are sitting with Jesus equally in heavenly places. Come on, hallelujah! No wonder the devil hates you and me. We are seated with him, with him. With him. Few days back, the spirit of God told me, son, you are not going from earth to heaven. You are going from eternity to eternity. How? The Bible says, he knew you even before the foundations of the world. So you came from eternity. You didn't come from planet earth. You didn't come from Bangalore. You didn't come from Chennai. You didn't come from Africa. You didn't come from America. You didn't come from Banaswadi. You didn't come from Whitefield. You came from eternity and you are going back to eternity. If I was a person, I would have jumped from this church, I would have screamed and shouted. Because this is your identity. Come on, church, are you with me? You are not from going to earth to heaven, you are passing from eternity to eternity. Where did you come from? Eternity. Where are you going? Eternity. Where are you living? Eternity. Come on, you are so special. You know why the world has not seen the power of God? Because we have placed our own identity on us. Your skin color. Your bank balance. Which cost you come from. What degree you have. What's your salary. Who's your wife. Which school your children study. All these things are rubbish. All these things are rubbish. Your greatest identity is that you are an eternal being, you are going to an eternal place, you are living in eternal places, you are seated in eternity right now. The day I got this revelation. Nothing I liked. Even if someone will give me a BMW now, I will say, thank God, please go. Even if I buy a ten-bedroom house in, in Chennai, nothing is going to impress me. Yeah, you know why? You know why? You know why? I come from a place of eternity. And that place, even the street is made of gold. I am seated in a throne called eternity. I don't go by Monday to Sunday. I don't function by the currency I have in my wallet. I function by the presence of God. The presence of God. The presence of God. The presence of the Father. The presence of the Father. So we all, past every Sunday, he will say, may the Lord make his face to shine upon you. You know what it really means? How many have you, how, how many of you have, you know, played with a baby? I've seen people taking the baby by their, by their face like this. Chella kutti! You look into the baby's eyes, you just, you just have so much of love, you just speak a lot of- You look into the baby's eyes, you just, you just have so much of love, you just speak a lot of random things, you know, that the baby doesn't understand, but the baby smiles. You know, have you seen that? You're my darling, oh, you're my world, that is exactly what the father is doing to you, he takes you by your face, he looks it to eye to eye, says, "Hey, I laugh, I smile, I sing, you are my delight." The presence is not a property, the presence is a person. Turn to somebody and say, "You are the presence of God." Come on, turn somebody, tap them and say, "You are the presence of God." The presence of God is not a building. The presence is God, the presence of God is not an ark. I am the presence of God. I am the location of God. I am the address of God. I carry God. I carry God. I carry the presence of God. Come on, I don't see anyone excited here, the presence of God lives in me. Whatever I'm saying is from Hebrews nine, don't go home and read Hebrews nine, Exodus twenty-five, numbers ten, numbers four, you can go home and read this, I'm not going to take, there's not much time, let's go deeper. Numbers four. Numbers four. Verses five. Numbers four, verses five. When the, when the camp is set out, Aaron and his sons shall go out and take down the veil of a screen and cover the ark of the testimony with it, and then they shall put a covering of goat's skin and a spread on top of that, a cloth of a blue, and it shall, and put it on its pole. It is so glorious, it has the presence of God. But it had to be covered with a goat's skin, a leather. It was, it was covered with a blue cloth. See, the veil that was on the ark of the covenant was not a curtain. It was as thick as a wall. It was heavy. So, the ark was covered with leather skin and with a blue cloth. The presence of God was covered. This evening, I'm asking you a question. Who is covering you? Are you being covered? You know, some people say, "Well, I'm anointed." I know the word of God. I will do what I want. No. Your pastor is your covering. Your pastors are your covering. The devil's idea is to take you out of your covering. He will not take you out of your salvation. He will remove you from your covering. I know many gifted people, but they don't have the humility to be covered. They want to be exposed. They want to be show off. They want to exhibit. The ark of the covenant was glorious, but it was covered. I don't care what anointing you carry, but if your anointing has to be covered by the servant of God. It's not about the anointing. It's not about your, it's not about your, 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 your talents and skills. I stand here under their covering. I don't talk to Pastor Samuel Jayraj and Pramila Jayraj every week, every day. I watch them from far. The hunger pulls from their life. I learned the spirit of excellence from watching from Chennai. I received their maturity from them. You know why? Submission is not physical, it's the posture of your heart. Some people can kneel down in the church, but in the spirit, they can be like this. Humility is nothing external, but it's the posture and the position of your heart. This season, God is working with my heart a lot. Worship is art and heart connected both. It has both, it is art and heart. If it is not from your heart, it cannot reach the throne of God. You can have a lot of knowledge in your head, but if your heart is not positioned right, you cannot touch the heavenlies. No, Jacob falls in love with a woman. That's the greatest love story. He did everything to marry that one woman. But if, if he was a deceiver, the father-in-law was a double deceiver. So, he's getting into the marriage, not knowing the girl. The father-in-law cunningly replaced the girl. But the Lord has said, "Okay, you get married, go into the room." It won't take minutes for this idiotic Jacob to find out that it's not his girlfriend. If he would have said, "Darling", he would have heard the voice of the girl. This is not that girl. This is not Rachel. This girl, this man was so focused in exposing and not knowing. He wanted to expose her immediately, not having a conversation of knowing her, the problem was, it took another seven years for him to get married to the other girl. Who is covering you? Who is covering you? People say, "Oh, come on, I'll give you worship ministry, I'll give you this music ministry, I'll take you to America, I'll give you this immediately, oh, the Lord is lifting me," no, 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 that's the trap of the devil from the hell. Jesus was covered with humility to his father. People who wear humility and submission will shine brighter in the heavenlies. You know something, pride is natural, humility is a decision. By nature, we are proud. But if you see a person who is humble, don't take them for granted, they know to be proud, but they are choosing to be submissive. Who's covering you? Is your spiritual father covering you? I know people, they say, "I don't need any covering, God covers me," no, 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 no. Even the greatest apostle called Paul needed a man of call called Ananias to anoint him. Ananias never did any miracle ministry. At least, there is no information about that. But God said, "Paul, you're going to be the greatest apostle of the New Testament." But I want you to put your head under the man of God. If you want to walk in authority, you better walk in submission. Every month, I send my tithes from my church and from me to my spiritual father. Every time I go to a, I go to a ministry, I'll send them a voicemail, "Papa, I'm going here, pray for me," you know, that one, I don't care even if he calls me, you know, you know, some people get angry, my pastor didn't call me. The pastor did say, "Praise the Lord" to me. The pastor is not coming home. The pastor is not to do postman work here. Your father is to decorate you as a possession of God. Who is covering you? I know too many people, they went outside the covering. They fell down. I know too many, too many, too many people. I don't want to be a fool like that. It's not about how high you jump, it's about the longevity. Many people do great things and they fall down quickly. It's not about this, it's about that. Do you have a father? Do you honor him? Do you celebrate him? Do you love, do you pray for them? Maybe God has called you for ministry, can you say, "Pastor, this is what God is saying, can you tell me what to do?" Simple, one more example. I'm raising with time today. How many of you are receiving something? How many are receiving? Are you receiving? Elijah went after Elijah, Elijah went after Elijah. Prophet, 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 prophet. Elijah didn't even give a, I mean, he didn't even care, this guy is pursuing Elijah. Everyone left, this guy is pursuing Elijah. I want that anointing. I want that grace. I want that anointing. I want that grace. He's going after Elijah. Prophet, 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 prophet. Nothing happened. But you know, when Elijah was taken up in the glory, he saw him in the heavenlies. He said, "Father." The moment he said, "Father", the mantle came down. The mantle came down. The mantle came down. It's not about the prophet, it is about the father and sonship. The chariot is carrying a person of eighty kilos. The chariot of fire is carrying a person of eighty kilos. Can't it carry an eighty gram mantle? But you know why the mantle came down? There was a man who was waiting in honor. There was a man who was waiting in hunger. There is a man who had a revelation, he is not a prophet, he is my father, the moment he said, "Father," that mantle came down. I'm not against Bible college. Bible college can teach you theology. But the anointing cannot be taught, it is caught. There is no flow chart and formula for you to move in the anointing. It is transferable. It is transferable. I'm going to shock you. Prayer doesn't bring anointing. I'm not against a prayer. But you know what? Honor. 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 What your honor attracts you. I know many buffoons are there in YouTube criticizing servants of God. Never watch a criticizing video and feel good about it, if you're doing that, you are psychotically ill. God told me, there are many people who don't criticize, but they see videos of people of God being mocked and they have a satisfaction inside, that is not only demonic, there's something wrong with you psychologically. Last month, the spirit of God told me, "Son, I'm going to do something radical in your ministry and people will start criticizing you." So, last week, we had a seminar in the altar. So, that, so I had just hundred rupees called registration, hundred rupees is peanuts today. Sometimes, when you do freely, people don't know the value, so hundred rupees is nothing and the hundred rupees is for food. So, someone took a photo of it and put it in Facebook. I didn't know, my, someone from outside, they're sending me, "Hey, Joseph, did you see, your face is there in that poster and there's a huge thing, Chennai, Noodanakollai, Sabail," I was shocked. I know for a fact that guy who is talking about, he has not even done one percent of the ministry I did. Be careful what goes into your heart. Anything messes up with the honor in your heart, it is from the pit of hell. You know what honor can do? David honored a demon possessed to Saul. God saw it precious. And you are not here, you are the servants of God and are anointed, they are anointed by the Holy Spirit. Honor the anointing they carry. Are you with me? Are you with me, church?
என்னோடு கொடுகிறீங்க சபையே.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Quickly, let's go.
தொடந்து போகலாம்.
Your covering is your protection.
உங்குடை மூடுதல் தான் உங்குடை பாதுகாப்பு.
The next thing, the Ark of the Covenant
அடுத்த காரியம் உடன்படிக்கிப்பெட்டிலே.
Was carried by the priest.
அதை லேவியர்கள் ஆஸ்தார்கள் சுமந்துகொண்டு போனார்கள்.
There should be a rod and four people carried on the shoulders.
அதை அவர்களுடை தோள்களில் ஆஸ்தார்கள் சுமந்துகொண்டு போனார்கள்.
It is heavy.
அது மிகவும் பலமுள்ளது.
The ark was heavy.
அந்த உடன்படிக்கிப்பெட்டி பலமுள்ளது.
The whale was heavy.
அங்கே இருக்க திரைசிலை பலமுள்ளது.
Presence of God carrying is not easy, there is a price to pay. It is heavy thing.
தேவுடை பிரச்சனத்தை சுமப்பட்டு எலிபான காரியமில்ல. அதற்கு ஒரு கிரயத்தை செலுத்தவேண்டோ.
You can see your pastors wearing suit and a beautiful sari. It's all smiling, but nobody knows that the brokenness and the hardships they carry to bring the word of God every day to you.
உங்கள் போதுகரை நீங்கள் ஒருவெளியே பார்க்கும்போது நல்ல சாரி உடுத்தவர்களாய் ஒரு சூட் உடுத்தோளா நீங்கள் காணலாம். ஆனால் அதற்குப் பின்பதாய் அவர்கள் செய்த தியாகமும் அந்த பலியும் நீங்கள் அறியவேண்டோ.
The first time I saw my wife, I told her before marriage.
கலியானத்துக்கு திருமணத்துக்கு முன்பதாக முதல் முறையான மனவீபி பாத்துச் சொன்னது.
I told, "Hey Leno, you can see me wearing the suit boot, you can see me in Facebook, you can see me in television, you can see me in posters, but inside the suit and the boot, there is a broken life. Nobody will see, only you will see. Are you willing to marry me?"
ஒரு மற்றவர்களுக்கு பார்க்குறமாதிரி இந்த சூட்லேயோ என்னுடை காரிங்கள் நீ பார்க்கலாம். ஆனால் எனக்குலா உடைக்கப்பட்ட ஒரு மனிதன் இருக்கிறான். அதைப் பார்த்த பின்பூம் என்னை நீ திருமணம் செய்ய, நீ சம்மதிக்கிறாய்ன்னு கேட்டேன்.
It is a hard work.
அது ஒரு கடின உளைப்பு.
It is a serious business.
அது ஒரு சீரியசா செய்யபடுவது காரியம்.
They had to carry the Ark of the Covenant, which was heavy.
ஏன்னுடால் உடன்படிக்கிப்பெட்டி பலமுள்ளதாயிருக்கிறபடியால் ஒரு கிரயத்தை செலுத்தவேண்டோ.
Before people could go, the Ark of the Covenant will go forward.
சனங்கள் போவதுக்கு முன்பதாய் உடன்படிக்கிப்பெட்டி முன்பதாய் போகவேண்டோ.
Which means the Ark of the Covenant can go in unfamiliar places.
அப்படி எந்தாலும் உடன்படிக்கிப்பெட்டியானது தெரியாத இடங்களுக்கும் போகவேண்டோ.
There was be no road, maybe there's rocks and they had to climb the rocks.
ஒருவெளியே குண்டுகள் காணப்படலாம் ஆனாலம் அதையும் தாண்டி சுமந்துகொண்டு போகவேண்டோ.
They had to walk on thorns.
அவர்கள் முட்புதருக்குள்ளாய் தாண்டி போகவேண்டோ.
They had to walk where places where others have not gone.
மற்றவர்கள் போகாத இடங்களுக்கு அவர்கள் போகவேண்டோ.
Only these people will carry the presence of God.
இப்படிப்பட்ட தியாகம்நிரிந்த சனங்கள்தான் தேவுடை பிரச்சனத்தை உடன்படிக்கிப்பெட்டி சுமக்கறார்கள்.
People who give excuses and compromising can feel the presence and they cannot carry the presence.
தாக்குபோக்கு சொல்லுற அவர்கள் தேவுடை பிரச்சனத்தை உணரலாம். ஆனால் தேவுடை பிரச்சனத்தை அவர்லை ஒருபோதும் சுமக்கமுடியாது.
They carried.
அவர்கள் சுமந்தார்கள்.
But the Hebrew scriptures say,
இப்பரையை இந்த பதம் சொல்லுகிறது.
The high priest carried the ark.
அந்த பிரதான ஆச்சாரியன் அந்த உடன்படிக்கிப்பெட்டி சுமக்கும்போது.
After a moment,
சில நேரம் களித்து.
It says that the presence carried them.
ஆ சில நேரப்பின்பது பிரச்சனம் அவர்லை சுமக் ஆரவிதது.
Which means they would be floating in the air, carrying the presence.
ஓ அது கர்த்தமென்னுடால் அவர்கள் மிதந்துகொண்டிருக்கிறார்கள். பிரச்சனம் அவர்லை சுமந்துகொண்டிருக்கிறது.
They thought they are carrying the presence, but the presence is carrying them.
அவர்கள் நனைத்தார்கள். அவர்கள் தேவுடை பிரச்சன சுமக்கறார்கள். ஆனால் அப்படியில்ல, தேவுடை பிரச்சனம் அவர்லை சுமந்தது.
Some of you are sitting here.
ஒருவெளியே சிலர் உக்காந்துகொண்டிருக்கிறீங்க.
I'm doing this ministry sacrificially.
இந்த ஊலித்தை தியாகமாய் செய்துகொண்டிருக்கிறேன்.
I'm doing this with a lot of pain and hard work.
நல்ல கடின உளைப்போடு நான் செய்துகொண்டிருக்கிறேன்.
No one appreciates me.
ஒருவரும் தேவைப்படத்துல்லை.
No one recognizes me.
ஒருவரும் என்னை கொண்டுகொள்ளவில்லை.
I'm carrying this heavy thing for my church.
A time will come that he will not carry the presence but the presence will carry your church. Literally they were elevated. They were carrying. The weight was real. The pain was real. But the presence carried them together. Come on give God a big clap offering. This evening I want to say the presence of God will carry you through the fire, through the valley, through the mountain, through the waters. Even if you go through the valley of shadow of death, the presence of God will carry you. The presence of God carried them. You will see it here after. You will see it here after. Pastor, I didn't know how I came out of this cancer. I didn't know how I came from this poverty. I didn't know how I came out of the separation. Oh, I didn't know how I came out of this mess. Because anyone who carries the presence, the presence has to carry them. That is the law of heaven. The last thing. Imagine this is the Ark of the Covenant. This is the ark. The size of the Ark of the Covenant is 3.7 meters. So which, and the size of the outside is 15 meters. Which means in 15 meters, you minus 3.7, how much? But if they actually calculate in those days. So from here to this end. There has to be 11.3 minus 3.7. Sorry, 11.3 divided by 2. But if they measure from here to there. The size of the Ark of the Covenant disappears. Which means from here to here. From here to there. It is still 15. It is still 15. It boggles mathematics. The moment the Ark of the Covenant is kept in the Holy of Holies. The mathematics is messed. Let me tell you. The presence of God is supernatural. The presence of God is supernatural. I prophesy over you. In the days to come. Some people will say. How did this happen? How did this happen? He will say, I trust me, I don't know. How did you build this house? I don't know. How did you clear the bank loan? I don't know. How did you get the visa? I don't know. How did your children pass? I don't know. You have 502 fish. But 5,000 people were fed and 12 baskets more. How? The presence of God destroys logic and mathematics. Come on, are you with me church? Jubilee Revival Church. God wants to usher the presence of God in Bangalore through you. You're not here to run an organization, you are here to carry the presence of God. You're not coming here to go to heaven but you are here to carry heaven into your jobs. Hey, D L Moody used to pray for hours and hours and walk on the streets. The moment he walked out of the streets. People fall down. Oh, I'm a sinner. He never preached. He never sang. He will just walk into the streets. Brothel centers will be closed. Brothel centers will be closed. Alcohol shops will be closed. Because here is a man who is walking in the glory. There is a man who is carrying the glory. When the light comes. The darkness has to leave. Are you ready to carry the glory of God here? Bangalore needs the glory of God. Parnaswadi needs the glory of God. Come on, you know something, in the upper room. The presence of God came down. The moment the presence of God came down. The whole city ran into a room. The secret is, you don't run out of the crowd, the presence pulls the crowd. They didn't say, please come, please come, please come, please get saved. Few, 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 a few weeks, few days back, they said crucify him. Now the same crowd is saying. What do I do to be saved? What do I do to be saved? The thing is the presence of God. The presence of God. The presence of God. The presence of God. The presence of the Father. The presence of the Father. Come on, are you ready to carry the presence? I already feel the glory of God all over my body right now. The moment I came here. The Lord is saying you need a healing. The Lord wants to deliver you. Fetic in your body is leaving. Fetic, fetic, tiredness. There's something pulling you down. You're not able to experience the freedom. The presence of God is touching your body. I don't know what I'm saying but what I've been saying means to you something. I'm telling you today the Lord is going to heal some people here. See, I'm going to go a little deeper for the next two days. There are three dimensions. One is faith dimension. The next is anointing dimension. That last thing is the glory dimension. We all begin in faith. We move to anointing. But God says, don't stay here. Now you have to go to the glory. In the glory realm. Your faith doesn't matter. Your prayer doesn't matter. Jesus shows up. Things happen. It's not your faith. It is not your battling. It is not your crying. It is not your effort. When Jesus shows up. When Jesus shows up. The spirit of God is saying, some of you, you're going to have an encounter of literally seeing Jesus in your houses. You will encounter the glory of God in your house, get ready. 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 The Lord is tired of a church that is talking. He wants a church that is moving. See, the Bible says, the spirit of God was moving on the surface of the waters. When the spirit is at move, that's when the word came. If the spirit of God was not moving, no word is, no benefit. I'm here to tell you. Jubilee Revival Church is a place where God moves. God moves. God moves. God moves. God moves. He's not standing here. He's not, he's not sitting here. He's moving here. And when he's moving, the word is spoken. Creative miracles can happen. Creative miracles can happen. Miracles can happen. Are you ready to? There's only five minutes. I want to honor the time that pastor gave me. Are you ready to go into the deep in five minutes? Are you ready church? Some of you. Suddenly you just feel. You know goosebumps in your body. Some of you, you, you really don't know that the father is passing by away, not knowing that the father is moving there. I've seen, I'm telling, I'm very sensitive to the presence. My gifts operate in the presence. I do not know about others, more than the gift, I'm sensitive to the presence. Some people can move in the gifts even without the presence. But I am a person, I need to feel God in the atmosphere. You know why that is the greatest blessing? Are you ready to just carry the presence of God outside? Just stand up wherever you are. I want you to lift up your hands. Close your eyes. I want you to imagine the father smiling at you. How many if imagination is a gift from God? No wonder the devil wants it and the spirit of God wants it. Imagination is thousand times powerful than the reality. My God is not a tyrant king. He is a loving daddy. He's a loving daddy. He's a loving daddy. He's a loving daddy. He's a loving daddy. He wants to put his arms around you. He wants to love you. He wants to kiss you. He wants to carry you. Come on. The Lord is saying. You are more important than the ministry you're doing. God told me that. I'm a hard worker. I've slept in the streets and observed God. I've walked kilometers and kilometers without money to serve Jesus. A day came. Jesus said. Son, you don't have to do anything to impress me. Even without you doing ministry, sit, eat, sleep, sit, eat, sleep, I'm still going to love you the same. Sometimes we think I need to earn. That's religion. That's religion. He says, just be my son and daughter. Last night was very difficult, I was leaving home, my son came, he literally choked my neck and he was sleeping. He's literally choking me, lying down next to me, choking me. When was the last time you were choking your God, say it Lord, I love you. I want money, I want job, I want marriage, I want baby, I want house, I want car, no, that is not children, that is servant. I want my father. Come on, in two minutes lift up your hands. Hmm, hallelujah, come on lift up hands and start talking to your daddy. Sing a love song to him. Sing a love song to him. The moment you're singing a love song, the glory of God is going to touch you right now. Open your mouth and sing a love song. Oh, hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hmm. Endai vame. Enne suve. Satatavoyarthy. Endai vame. Enne suve. Endai vame. Enne suve. Endai vame. Enne suve. Endai vame. Enne suve. Ummalagana kangaen ennaikandaale. Mudindanendru ninaithanan uyrvaalkindre. Ummalagana. Let your glory cover this place, it's covering you, it's covering you like a blanket. Oh, rahamanase. Unrum illada ennai umkarunyataale. Uyarthi vaita nalaneesare. Every guilt, every mistakes of your past, every lost opportunities, the Lord is raising it from you right now. Hey, enemy, your life is over over life. Ummalagana kangaen ennaikandaale. Mudindanendru ninaithanan uyrvaalkindre. Ummalagana kangaen ennaikandaale. Mudindanendru ninaithanan uyrvaalkindre. Church. We yet don't have a judgment seat. We have a mercy seat. If you notice, on the throne, the lion is not there, the lamb is there. I'll tell you the secret tomorrow when you come. Why Jesus is like a lamb on the throne, not a king, not a lion? The throne is almighty. But he says, I'm a lamb. Come play with me. When was the last time you played with God? You sang a love song to God. You sat with him and say, let's have a breakfast daddy together. When was the last time you shut your room and put a worship song, you were dancing with him? This is not a place of intimacy. The place of intimacy is where you live. Goddess saying, come back to my secret place. In that place servants can't come. Bride can come. A servant mindset cannot go into the inner chamber. God says, let your servant mind become a bridal mind. Tonight you're going to have encounters. You're going to have encounters. Tomorrow you'll come and tell the pastor. I had this dream. I had this encounter. I had this healing. The Bible says, even as they went back home, they were healed. I don't have time. I did my teaching. And it's not, it's revelation. You will go with the revelation. See, you know why revelation is so important? Where there is revelation, there is worship. Where there is worship, there is revelation. For millions of years, the angels are singing one song, holy, 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 holy. How boring? It's not boring at all, you know why? The moment they say holy. He reveals a new dimension of his holiness. The moment they see the dimension, they say, ha, and they say, holy. Then the, 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 God says, they say, wow, you're worshiping, now I'm going to reveal another holiness. Okay, you know what worship is? When was the last time you saw the flowers? You saw a sari and a salva, wow. You saw a watch, wow. You saw a house, wow. That is worship. The devil has stolen the wonder of worship in the church. The awerness of God is removed. You need to come to the presence. That is worship. In other words, hey, chaan seel, that is worship. May you have your wild moments with Jesus. Lift your hands and bless the name of the Lord. I pray that you will carry this presence with you. An encounter with God and the new dimension. Leaving behind your pride, your ego. As the man of God said, you need to humble yourself. Everything you think it is your pride and your value, leave it at its speed. You got to empty yourself for him to fill you with his glory. Be a seeker. Lift your hand and just praise him just for 10 minutes. Hallelujah, open him out and say, Lord. Seal the word in my heart right now. It will keep working in my heart. The devil will not take it away. Situation will not take it away. You will anoint it in my life. Oh, hallelujah, just open him out. I'll begin to pray this. Because I don't want you to lose this when you cross, when you leave the church. Let it stay with you. Forever. For all eternity. The word of God. Thank you Lord for your presence. Thank you for the word. Awesome word. Revelational word. Thank you Jesus.